Quickly.
Yes.
All right.
We're too business quickly.
We're live, so we can get this done for 7:30. Do we have -- does anybody have any revisions to our agenda? Nothing? Perfect. Apparently, we need to establish the tuition rate for fiscal year '17. Your recommendation, Bud, is fifteen -- recommendation is $15.5?
Yeah.
So we need a motion?
I make a motion, we set the tuition at $15,500.
That's for FY '17. Seconded.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of setting the tuition for fiscal year 2017 at $15.5? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Policy committee met. I understand you have some recommendations.
We'll try.
That's all you can do.
That's all I can do. There are some -- what is this? The Vermont School Board Association has changed the codes for some of the policies, and we're going to try and start to move our policy numbers to theirs. If we're not -- if we're just going to recommend to continue, if we actually would need to go back and review what was said and what policies were written, that's a different day. So of the ones that we think so far that we can just continue as is, C6 -- I don't even have the names of this.
C6 is Board Commitment to Non-Discrimination.
G6 is --
G is George six is Complaints About Instructional Materials.
Those two we would recommend to just leave to continue as is, and the numbers stay the same.
Yeah. They may change later, but we'll do that for now.
There are three more that where the numbers have changed, but we recommend that they be continued. G3 goes to D9.
That's Field Trips.
But we -- and we recommend to continue those, that. This H3 goes to E2.
That's Use of School Facilities.
And H4 goes to E3, so we recommend those three are also going to be continued. So there's a total of five policies that are -- the only difference is the numbering, and we recommend that those be continued as is.
The last one mentioned, H4, old H4, new E3, is Distribution of Non-School Sponsored Literature in Schools. That's when people come and say they want to pass out some literature to our students. And they're not, you know, it's not a school's work, it's outside organization.
Okay. So the recommendation then is to warn those poli -- or no, just to continue.
Just continue those five. So you don't need to warn them, you're okay.
We don't need to warn them, we just, we can --
They're continued, so that means I revise the date, you know, of adoption. And that means we would look at them again five years from now. The only thing that may change is because the School Boards Association has relabeled, reorganized the model policy manual, we may come back at a future date and say, "Okay, let's change that one to a different label." That doesn't require any warning or anything else, it's just, you know, it's not changing the words, so you're okay.
Okay. Do you need a motion to continue them, or we just need them reviewed?
Yes. Need a motion to continue them, as recommended by the policy committee.
Okay.
So I'll make that recommendation.
Make that motion.
That motion?
That motion.
Second.
All right. Great. Please don't make me restate the motion. But Bruce has made the motion basically to continue these five policies, as renumbered and redone, seconded by Patty. Any discussion on that?
I will explain that the committee is somewhat taken aback by the fact that I discovered today at 5 o'clock that the School Boards Association's changed their website and redone the policy manual, so we should expect to have fewer mandatory policies, but certainly a more compact policy manual. But of course, it requires a lot of adoption and rescission to do so. So I'd like to recommend this board support at the WCSU Board Policy, the Policy Committee for the WCSU Board undertaking this revision, so that it would universally apply, at least insofar as the mandatory policies are concerned, to all of the member boards of the WCSU. That would be ideal, but it would save each of boards, like yourselves, a lot of work.
Sure would.
So keep that in mind for the organization meeting in March for the WCSU Board.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Motion passes. All right.
And could I add for the minutes for this meeting that we met at 6:30, and I was here, Patty was here, Lindell was here, Twyla was here, and Steven was here.
And Durin.
And Durin, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Present for the Policy Committee.
For the Policy Committee.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
And basically, the minutes from the Policy Committee are as the recommendation made. It's their business.
We have a couple of minutes in the consent agenda, along with a policy that we warned at a previous meeting. We just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All right. Been moved and seconded to approve. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Motion carries.
Peter, if you could add, after the motion being carried and so forth, explain that the meeting scheduled for June, the January 12th, did not enjoy a quorum. So no --
It might have had one if it enjoyed it.
It enjoyed not having one.
Anyway, just pointing out something, no action taken, right?
Right. Thank you.
Nor minutes recorded.
That's why we have two sets.
Yeah, that's why our two sets of minutes are way back in December, because in January we didn't get to approve those.
Right. Are we ready for bills and pay orders, or are they still being reviewed?
No, they're done.
They're done? Just hand me that one sheet.
Hi, Barbara.
Now, at the last meeting, we did not have, like Steven pointed out, we did not have a quorum, but we did actually review pay orders. So in addition to the motion to approve these, we'd also need a -- we'd also add to that to approve --
Approve the previously signed.
Approve the previously signed payer -- pay orders, and I can give you actually totals, because I have them, if we need it. Do we need them, Peter, or can you just stick them in?
I can stick them in later.
Okay.
You got them last time.
I scanned it and emailed it to them, so I pull up an email, but I don't have the sheet.
Great. Okay, thank you.
All right. So we have two general fund warrants in totaling $56,608.99 and a payroll of $109,832.83. Total is $166,441.82. And then additionally, we have the ones from last month, which we can -- which the numbers will be reflected in the minutes. We just need a motion to approve those.
Can you repeat those numbers, please?
I'm going to bring them to you.
Oh, great.
Oh, yeah, we'll hand -- you can have them.
Hey there. I wasn't here last week, so I think I can make a motion to --
I'll move.
Oh, we're just -- you're just approving something somebody else reviewed.
Go ahead, Lindell.
I move that we approved them.
All right.
Whatever that was.
Okay. And Twyla, seconded. Any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of approving the bills and pay orders? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries. Okay. We have a few open seats. We talked about this a little bit last time, because Lindell, I know you're not -- you've decided not to run, because you have other things that you want to pay attention to. And I know, Bruce, your seat's open, and that's it. Oh, and Kelly. And I know Kelly is -- I have reminded Kelly she's going to put in a petition, she intends to run again. And then Lindell, we talked about, you're going to do, you know, if you can find a replacement, great. If not, we'll miss you.
No, no, I want to get -- Brookline needs somebody.
It'd be nice if we had a parent.
I call attention in the annual report, if you go to page 11. So this is an error. I'm just correcting something here. This is -- Lindell Bowles listed as having a term through 2018. I think she's happy to hear that that is not the case, but although we're sad about it, let's mark that to 2016.
So, and then Bruce, if you're not, if you, whatever you decide, you know.
I'm not going to pursue any.
Okay. Well, hopefully, you'll find somebody who's willing to step up.
You better be at town meeting.
Yeah, Jamaica's elected from the floor.
Jamaica goes from the floor, so.
Yeah, so you need to be at town meeting, because I've seen people be elected and put on the board in absentee.
Yeah, I just from the floor, and I think someone's going to run that's going to be.
Great. Take care.
I've seen it happen, so you want to be at town meeting, so you can say, "No, I decline." Or if I'm there, I can decline for you, if you'd like.
Yeah.
But yeah, it happens.
Well, that about covers it. Okay. Review the annual report. We have about nine minutes till we adjourn to the public budget meeting.
Continue with budget meeting.
Or continue with the budget meeting. Continue with the budget.
Well, it's just that I don't want you to think you're not adjourned in this meeting, you know.
No, we're just going to change what we're doing.
Okay.
At a certain time. Basically, it comes down to just pointing out the errors that made it into the annual report, right, Steven?
I think so. Does anybody have any corrections, other than the ones that I'm going to call to attention? I just did that one on Lindell Bowles. One I want to make sure that we pay attention to, although it's probably something that people quickly read over, is page seven. This is the report from Joe and me. Kind member of the public pointed out that in the fourth paragraph, where it talks about the 2015-2016 budget, that really should be saying the 2016-2017 proposed, 2016-17 budget. Now, how we managed to get through so many readers and nobody noticed that, I don't know, but it's certainly my responsibility to see it right, and it didn't, that's, you know, that's a mistake. The other thing is that in the next paragraph in the report, at the bottom of the paragraph, I think it says, "This increase," second to the last sentence, "this increase in our equalized pupil spending is largely due to a 7.9% increase in our share of employee health insurance and some necessary increases in special education." We have reduced employment. Wait a minute, that isn't where I was thinking. There's something -- oh, the line before that. "This projected spending per equalized pupil is lower than the spending of the current year," 2% lower. So then the next sentence says increase.
Yeah, I sent you an email about that.
Yes. So I have revised that. What I put is the increase in the proposed budget. That's the problem. If you change equalized pupil to the increase in the proposed budget, because after all, we have increased the budget, right? Increase in the proposed budget is largely due to, and bloody blah, okay? Member of the public also pointed out that you can't have the equalized pupil going lower, and then talk about it being increased the next time. So what's increasing is our total budget, and that's due to those factors, right?
Okay, got it.
If you're confused, it's, there's every reason to be confused. There are so many factors involved in this process.
No, it makes sense.
Okay?
And when we wrote this, didn't it act, wasn't equalized spending actually going up? And then we kept changing the numbers?
Yeah. Well, that may be, yeah. When you and I wrote it first.
And the sentence stayed in there.
When you and I wrote it first, that probably --
It actually was going up.
Yeah.
All right. What other errors do we have?
That's it, as I know.
That's it. And I know from conversations that I had earlier tonight with Bud, that all of the pages that say, you know, "to be inserted later," we will have documents to insert there.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, you can get absentee ballots for this, can't you?
They're already printed, and they've already been distributed to all the clerks.
Do you know why that happened? Because we tried to get one for my daughter, and they sent her absentee ballot for the primary. But I wanted her to have this one.
I think they just were confused about which one it was. They were out, they were out the first week in January. I mean, we had them in our office at the late, yeah.
When's the deadline for --
There are actually some blanks sitting in my office, but I can't issue them.
No, and you can't, she, you can't give me one for her.
No, you've got to go through the clerk.
When's the deadline that it would have to be in? Do you know?
I don't think there's a deadline before the election. I think it just has to be on time.
It has to be by that day, okay.
To be counted.
So I could have them send her another one down to school, and she could do it and send it back.
Yeah.
And they'll send her to the primary.
What date was that?
This was last week, because she was home on Friday, and she went to the post office, and she picked it up, and it was the primary ballot, not the blue and the gray ballot.
Oh, she got it, yeah. I think they just were confused about which one she wanted, I guess. I don't know. Because they have, okay. Other questions about it?
Does anyone else, did anyone else have any, anything in the annual report?
No, looks very good. They all did a good job.
I'd certainly want to thank Durin and the team here inside the building, as well as Kristen and so forth, but Bud, you have something to report about those papers, those inserts, the audit and so forth? Do you want to mention that? Excuse me. Yes, two of the documents that we did not have in time for publication was the, that's not the right one, was the three-year comparison. We have that, and we also have the comparative data for cost effectiveness. I just received that this morning from the AOA. So those people have been awful busy up there with Act 46 stuff, just like everybody else has, and I know they're working as hard as they can to get that information to us. I received a draft audit report and financial statements yesterday afternoon. I spoke to our auditors this afternoon, and I will have to them tomorrow morning my responses to their findings, and then we should have the audit available. The auditors will be here next Tuesday at 6:30, now to present that audit to you. So like, would have liked to have had it a week earlier, but it is on its way. So please mark your calendars. Not all the board has to attend. We don't have to have a quorum, but we do need to have representation from the board to receive the report from the auditors and ask questions.
Will we be able to get a copy of that?
It's a public meeting as well.
Will we be able to get an advanced copy of that, by any chance? So that we can have a question or two?
I'll probably be able to do that by email.
Okay.
I'm expecting that to be, you know, they don't probably have a bound and everything by Friday.
No.
I'd like to have a clean copy, I can email it to.
Yeah, if we could just have a PDF ahead of time, so that when, when we, when they present it to us, we could have actually read through it and be able to ask questions, that'd be terrific.
What it can do is, there aren't going to be, there aren't going to be any real substantive changes from, from the draft to the, to the final. There's some things that have to be cleaned up. If, if the board would like, I could email that, that draft, so you have the actual financials. Nothing in terms of numbers will change between that and the, and the final. So that's, that's your pleasure.
That is. Drafted, be fine with me.
Okay. I will get, I will get that out to the board tomorrow morning.
This'll be a guy on the phone?
No, it'll be her person.
A real person?
Yeah. No, you're going to see real auditors this time, they're trying to make up for.
We're going to see where we spend our money.
See the face you spent your money on.
Oh, it's not his phone?
Remember, it's, it's less money than the last time. Saving some money on this one, but.
All right. Well, okay, now, so we're recessing now into the public information meeting for the FY '17 budget.
May I introduce people?
I was going to say, we probably, we, are you a member of the public for this one, Barbara? Something? Kind of both?
She's listening in.
Yeah, I can't not work on here, but I'm a member of the slash.
Slash working.
Yeah.
All right. And Mr. Bill Lincoln. Nice to see you again. Julian, Mr. Bill Lincoln was the principal of this school.
Oh, really?
About --
How many principals ago?
Two principals ago. Third. No, three. Yours. It was you, then it was Lloyd.
I was '01 to '05.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because you were the principal when I moved to Vermont, but I didn't have kids at the school, so I knew who you were.
Mr. Lincoln thought he'd be here a year, but he loved it so much, he stayed in the fort, right?
That's right. Stuck at gear.
Yeah. I had the pleasure of serving.
Loved everything.
I had the pleasure of serving Mr. Lincoln, that's why we're so buddy-buddy.
So we can have the board introduce ourselves.
Yeah.
You know, I'm Joe Williams, I'm the, I'm a member from Townsend, I'm the chair of the board, and then we'll just start at the end with our student.
I'm Julian, I'm a senior, and I'm a student member.
Good.
Jeremy Callaway, a member from Newfane.
Oh, Patty Dixon, a member from Jamaica.
And Lindell Bowles from Brookline.
I'm Twyla Holden from Townsend.
Bruce Parlamman, representing Jamaica.
You know Bud, I think. So, welcome. You're our public tonight.
Yeah, we're, we're here to answer questions from, from you guys, so.
Bill is a Townsend resident.
Please, uh.
There we go. All right, Bill's here. We got another Bill. Great. We're just introducing the public here. And now, let's see, I need to get you some papers here.
We just, we just, we just actually finished going through the board and introducing ourselves, and you kind of came in. We can, we can do that again if you need to. Just for our recorder, if you introduce yourselves.
Okay, I'm Bill Gunther, from, up in Benchmont, the Newfane.
I'm Bruce Mellow, I'm from Brookline, I'm also on the select board in Brookline. Hi, Lindell.
Okay.
Like seeing Brookline.
Somebody's got to give.
Who's going to run for the board?
This is the information that you have to add to the annual report.
All right, so I was just explaining that we're actually here, ready to answer any questions you guys may have. I don't think we, we, I didn't plan for any sort of a presentation, more of just a, you know, informal question and answer session. If, if you're looking for sort of a broad overview, we could do something like that, but, you know, I was figuring that anybody who showed up would probably have read this thing and have some questions for us. Am I wrong?
Well, I just got it this morning. I thought it was the Newfane market, but it turned out, I guess it's not, not one of the places it's.
Wasn't there? Oh, oh, down to Newfane at the common?
Yeah, that market. I went a little.
I guess not. I found him at the West Townsend store, so it, you know, it's variable a little bit.
I went a little late, just went inside, stopped at Gloria's there, the town clerk's side.
We'll try to drop some off there.
It's at the Riverbend. The big pile at the Riverbend.
Yeah. No, they're around, but it's just not every place that's.
The market would be helpful, that'd be, that's right.
Yeah, well, yeah, the Newfane market is, it's Riverbend, but we didn't do the other one, yeah. Okay.
I think we could probably say, couldn't we, that basically we're taking into consideration the, the costs that we can't control, special ed and insurance, that made it hard for us. That, I think, represented almost 3% of, of an increase, so we, so our actual increase that we could control is like 1 point something.
1.24%.
Yeah. So, you know, there are the costs that we, we had, we just, they just are.
Right.
Unfortunately.
And then we had to take into consideration the threshold for the Act.
The Act 46.
46, which may not turn out to be necessarily done, but we, we weren't, our timing was such that we had no choice.
Yeah.
So, and that's a situation by which, if you go over the threshold as, as determined by the state, that for every dollar you spend, an extra dollar, per dollar of the threshold, an extra dollar, isn't it, has to be raised in taxes?
Yeah. Yes, I believe that's the penalty.
Over the allowable spending growth.
Is that a 130?
It was 100, it's 121% in the last law of the average, but the Act 46 has allowable spending growth provisions that the legislature is thinking about redoing, but it, that meant that every school district had a different percentage of allowable growth based on previous spending patterns.
Well, I have to admit, one of my reasons in coming tonight was seeing if I could get a better handle on Act 46 than anybody.
Well, I'm here to serve.
We all like that. There's a lot of meetings going on, all.
So would the legislature.
Yeah. There's a lot of us that would like that.
It sounded like they rushed through something, you know, they had some ideas and, boy.
Well, in response to your question, yeah, what, the allowable spending growth was provisioned was, was certainly an effort by the legislature to include in the Act that called primarily for restructuring boards and reducing the number of school boards, not closing schools, but ensuring educational opportunities more equitable based across the state by having fewer boards. At least that's the connection I make. That may be political, but I'm just saying, that's where I'd see it. But they wanted to have an overall cap of spending growth statewide of 2%. Now, when the legislature thought about trying to pass that kind of a cap, they, they realized that some school districts had a very low student, per pupil student cost. In our SU, Newbrook, would be that kind of school, around 14,000. Well, you'll see it on your papers from the Newbrook and Brookline reports, okay? And then others were spending very high, maybe 16,000. So that kind of difference presented, you know, when you say 2% overall, that meant the people who'd been spending the most per pupil, those towns, would have the greatest allowance in terms of money. And the schools that had the lowest per pupil cost would have the lowest cap. Well, I mean, 2% of 14,000 is less money than 2% of 16,000.
So being penalized or.
No, so what they did was they didn't do a standard 2% across the board. They called it an allowable spending growth, basically a target, and they established that by each school district. And there's a big chart that shows all those numbers. And just to show you the contrast, in our supervisor union, the most generous percentage increase is to Newbrook, because Newbrook had the lowest per pupil head spending. The, the skinniest cap, the least, and that was over, a little bit over 2%, Bud?
2.15.
2.15% was allowed in Newbrook. Townsend was allowed only .78%, less than 1% in Townsend, because Townsend had, in the past, a higher per pupil head spending. It doesn't mean the people at Townsend were any more spend-thrist than, they just had a different student-teacher ratio situation, and they had different costs in personnel. But anyway, that's, that's how it's a variable across the state, and you can't just say, "Okay, everybody's just 2% flat rate." Now, interestingly, Townsend School Board has proposed a budget which is below the spending, the allowable threshold, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
Yeah. Whereas Newbrook Board has voted to exceed the threshold, okay?
Should I go in on that?
Yeah, tell me, correct.
Even though Newbrook has a higher percentage, they can't spend, they can't spend as much as Townsend, because they started a lower place. So there are some unintended consequences, I think, from that formula.
They tried to adjust it, but it doesn't, it didn't do it. So among all the boards that I represent, more, more of them have voted to exceed the allowable spending growth than those that haven't. And interestingly, some of them, some of the towns that boards have proposed budgets that exceed the spending growth, for example, Wardsborough, I believe I'm right on this, Wardsborough is spending $35,000 less in their budget, but they're exceeding the allowable spending growth target on a per pupil basis. And their whole -- And their whole goal in, in Wardsbury is to keep the tax rate flat. So, you know, I'm explaining to you how these, these variables don't, they're not consistent across all my school boards. Marlboro has voted to exceed the threshold, their tax rate will go down. Uh, you know, I'm sharing this with the public on, on the cable as well, so you appreciate how things are different in different towns, depending on a lot of things that the board or the administration does not control. The board and the administration control spending and propose a spending amount to the public. What we don't control is the, what, what the equalized pupil is going to be, what the number of pupils is, basically, that you have to divide into that budget. We also don't control, to some degree, the education spending, which is the diff, which is what remains after you take out some special ed reimbursements, some transportation reimbursements, some other grants from the, from the state. Bond, bonding would be one of those things, but we don't have too much of that. So when you see a per pupil ed spending on this tax chart, it's the, not the total budget divided by the equalized students, but what remains after you take the exclusions out that the state has granted, designated. Now, here's something else we don't control. We don't control the special ed costs or the special ed needs of our students. So that can vary. What we have to do is base the budget on what we know from what's called the service plan submitted to the state every fall in October, November. That means Abby Dillon, Director of Special Ed, canvases all the student population in the school and the case managers and says, okay, this is who we predict is going to be at what school next year and at what cost and what they need. That affects your ed spending, because if it's an extraordinarily expensive student special education, you get much more reimbursement. You never pay for everything, but, you know, it's, it's, uh, that can have a tremendously powerful effect on what's called your ed spending, as well as the budget projected needs. Uh, the other thing we don't control is, uh, the common level of appraisal, which can vary quite a bit from year to year, and it's listed on that chart as well in your local town. And then the other two things that happen is the state, at the end of the legislative session, adds up all the budgets that the public votes in the various towns for schools, and says, okay, that's what we need to raise for money. Okay, how much are we going to grant for ed spending for each child in the state? Last year, it was 9,000 something. We'll see what happens this year. Then they also set the statewide property tax and non-residential property tax rate to raise money for the schools. So those variables, we don't control, and they end up being affected by what the public at large in every town across the state votes for an approved budget. It's a fascinating, uh, study in, you know, equitable tax adjustments and fundraising, to put it, you know, in a positive way. And, uh, the, the, uh, the things, so the things that the boards don't know, and what we can't guarantee you, even though it projects a tax rate here, and Bud works on it, is, uh, you know, quite a number of these things. So concentrate on the spending and the proposed budget, is my advice. Did that leave any further questions, Bill, or you got, is that enough for you on 68? Forty-six, now, oh, well, so here's the speculation that people have. You've heard a lot in Digger, Vermont Digger, and on the news. The legislature is trying to resolve some adjustment on the allowable spending growth targets, because they realize that for some school districts, it's, it's onerous for them to pay this, you know, penalty, this double, double pay penalty. And, uh, the, uh, so they're rushing to do this, because I think the deadline for warning the town meeting, if they meet on Town Meeting Day, was, was this week, so maybe today, I don't know. It's 30 days before March 1st, so what does that make it? 28 days, 29 days?
I think it's 29.
29 this year, so we can go until the 30th theoretically, which is Saturday. But at any rate, they're trying to rush to make sure that if boards want to warn the budget with that article that says, what's your ed per pupil cost and what's the increase, that it's as accurate information as they can get. I think unfortunately, most of my boards, they've already warned their budgets, so what they're going to have to do is go to the floor of the meeting and make an amendment. You may be prepared for that in Brookline, Townsend, Newfane. The, but, the amount of the budget probably won't change, although the town has the right to do that. Voters can amend up or down. But, um, from the floor. The problem that Leland Gray faces is we've already had to warn the ballot a long time ago. We had to warn the, the, the budget. And so, uh, you know, changes, regardless of what the legislature does, we're kind of where we're at. We've done the, your board's done the best it can, because you had to get the warning out way back in January. Actually, December 28th, I think was the last day we could do it for the... And keep in mind, the legislature doesn't really keep, focus on Leland and Gray's needs when they're voting on this stuff, so... Lyndal?
Can I add one thing, when this gentleman was asking, what did we think about Act 46 and what was it? That we have actually voted as a board and as a supervisory unit to hire a consultant to help us assess the different options available to us?
That's right, yes. We did get a grant, yeah, we did get a grant from the AOE for $5,000 to do a study of Act 46 on behalf of all the school districts.
Right, that's a WCSU.
WCSU Board, and it's not, it's $5,000, it's not, you know, enough to get into too much detail, but it should help the boards decide what pathways they want to take in terms of combining or at least exploring combinations of different boards. The one that's most, the issue that's most pertinent to this board is the previous, uh, study on, uh, creating a regional education district, which is a pre-K through 12 district that has the five towns of Leland and Gray combined into one board similar to this board. And maybe that idea will come back, but in, in order to be approved, certainly the public would have to be convinced it's a good thing to do, and that they all, all individually as towns approve it by Australian ballot. And that, there's no date set for that.
But the state has...
It's exciting times, folks.
Well, other than the statutory dates.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying in terms of the Act 46, there's a limit to get the, the tax benefit of July, June 30th of 2017 would be, you have to have it all voted on and approved before then to be implemented. Or any combination. Wardsbury and Dover are considering exploring that path. Marlboro is wondering what it can do, because it's, doesn't have any partners that are obvious. Maybe Halifax is a pre-K through A, but that's not, that's not the problem of this meeting. It's, it's other districts' issues.
The way 46 is structured, are we going to see the supervisory union, uh, defined lines likely breaking down?
Could, yeah. It's up to the public.
Let's see, because Halifax is in...
Halifax is in, uh, in Windham Southwest. And you raised the issue of what's happening on, along that line. At one time, there was a study, uh, sponsored by the Agency of Education, funded for a consultant to see about Windham Southwest and Windham Central, what could be combined there. And it didn't come to anything, but the study was completed. They, uh, they are meeting on Monday. The officers of this WCSU, which is Emily Long from this board, Rich Warner from Dover, and Alicia O'Donnell from Brookline, are the officers of the WCSU Board, and they are going to meet on Monday night in Dover, 5:30, with board members, presumably the chair of the board, Seth Boyd from Twin Valley, from Windham Southwest, and the superintendent, Chris Pratt, and I'll be there as well. It's a public meeting, so I'm advertising it, but it's, it's a matter, it's not really a board meeting in the sense that the board can decide anything. It's just a matter of these officers getting together to see if there's something worth exploring that way. Certainly, Twin Valley with the, uh, uh, Twin Valley High School, Middle School, High School is in a situation similar to Leland and Gray, although they have many fewer students and a much smaller constituency. So they certainly are concerned about, um, the opportunities and the challenges presented by Act 46.
So, we could probably hold an Act 46 meeting anytime. We've gone way off on a tangent here. Is there anything that's actually pertinent, you know, that's a little more pertinent to perhaps our budget that we're going to vote on in a week?
Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Well, a week and a day.
Yeah, that's right.
So it looks like the total dollar expenditures are about, well, I'm just doing the math in my head, 157,000 more, but the equalized per pupil cost looks like it's dropped, I think you said, was it 0.2%?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that is one of the intriguing aspects of that. Now, the budget, though, isn't it up 1, 7120 from 703?
Uh, let's see, I'm looking on page 17. It was 6.543,720, so, yeah, 100 and...
Okay, I'll look on the tags.
77,000.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're correct.
I'm wondering what this does to the academic program so far as loss of position.
Durant, would you like to answer that?
Sure, I'd be happy to answer. Uh, the, there, in terms of the budget proposal, it's a plan for how to proceed. There have been some staff reductions that will not result in program reductions, and that is correlated with the decline in enrollment. So we anticipate having 320 students next year. And, uh, so that has allowed us to reduce staff and faculty 2.71 full-time equivalent. And, uh, it is a budget proposal, so what happens, um, and hopefully everything in terms of the budget process goes smoothly. But what does end up happening is that in February and March, our course requests, and then we finalize contracts. Uh, and that's based on the requests around graduation requirements and electives, depending on how many students per class. So it's, so, um, one question I've had is how can we go from five full-time mathematics teachers to four full-time mathematics teachers? But actually, we have 4.25 math teachers this year. And based on another small seventh grade group coming in next year, we're able to reduce that to 4.0. So, uh, in terms of program offerings, there were some current concerns a couple of years ago about French. Teachers had, or are receiving dual certification, so that French is continuing without interruption at our school. And other, and there was, there's another reduction in, um, health and physical education, but there have been teachers who have gained certification in those areas. So instead of needing to have reductions in other areas, we're able to maintain the full-time equivalence with teachers teaching in new areas of licensure. So in that way, we're able to adapt our faculty to a smaller population without harming programs. Can I answer your question? A little bit?
Yes.
What, what else can I tell you?
Go ahead.
That, that gives me a lot better handle on it.
There have been a couple...
When you start cutting staff, my immediate response is whoops.
Yeah, what do you lose?
Now, what are you losing?
There have been a couple of areas of increase. One of them is in music, because of the increased popularity of a new program called Music Technology. And we've had to offer two sections of that class this year. Uh, in the past, we've only had one section. So that was a, previously a 1.4, sorry, in music total, it was 1.67, so one position was 6.7. Next year, it's in the budget for 0.83, and we needed to run it as 0.83 this year because of those course enrollments. But like I said, there was a reduction in math. Uh, another area that we needed to increase was, uh, in previous years, we had budgeted 31,000 for Journey East programs. Uh, and then last, then for this current fiscal year, it was reduced to 15,000, sixteen, I think it's 15,000. Uh, and we needed to, uh, bring it back to the previous level to 31,000 for next year, because this year, we do not have any students, tuition-paying students from China. Last year, we had about five of them. So that, so it helped us tremendously, because that, the, the, um, tuitioning Chinese students is directly to support our Journey East programs, um, which is currently in session. Uh, and so for next year, we had to increase it to, back to the previous level. So it's not that everything has been reduced. Steve had mentioned earlier about increases in special education, which is what we did need to do. And those are essentially the areas where there have been increases. And in one other area, I don't want to neglect, um, we have a planning room down on sea level. Basically, it's a suspension room and a place where students who can't remain in class for the moment can go and be safe and have support. And, uh, this year in the budget, it's for one and a half people, 1.5 FTE. For next year, it's budgeted at 2.0, because, um, one of the people who are, is designated planning room staff is also half-time, the 504 Plan Coordinator. And I'm sure you know what 504 is, but for those of you who don't know, 504 is a, a federal category for a student who has a disability, a diagnosed disability, but is not eligible for special education. So it's just like special education, in that they have an individual plan, they call it a 504 Plan, but they don't get special education services, because their disability is not, uh, does not have what they call adverse effect on reading, writing, or math. That doesn't mean they're doing well in school, but it means that they are capable of doing well in school, as opposed to having a significant learning disability that, that without services, they wouldn't be successful. So, uh, we have, uh, close to 40 students with a 504 Plan, and so they need a case manager to help shepherd them through and work with their teachers. So, uh, we have a, so one of the members of the planning room staff is put in this full-time next year, as actually she is already this year. We had to make some budget adjustments last spring, just like we do every year, based on the needs.
Sure. Just want to add, as a parent and a longtime school board member, Dr. Dorfman and the staff have really stepped up to the plate in terms of flexibility, getting, uh, dual certifications when necessary, so teachers could be moved around. And that, you know, while our, our student body is shrinking, we have been able to maintain and increase our program offerings, which is really impressive. So, you know, my hat's off to you guys, you've done an awesome job with this. I'm really pleased. And as far as that planning room goes, that's a really important part of our school. I mean, it seems sad that we have to increase staff for that, but having a place to put disruptive kids means that the rest of the kids in the school can get a good education.
It also benefits those kids.
And those kids.
We're not just...
Well, but, but there's, yeah, it's really a significant thing. As, as any parent knows, if your kid, if there's a disruptive kid in your kid's class, your kid doesn't learn. And, uh, it's important for both the disruptive kids to get their services and the kids who are here to learn to have a, you know, a good environment in their classroom.
What type of student teacher ratio is in the 504 Plan students? Are they close to one-on-one?
They're students who are integrated into the mainstream. They're in regular classes, uh, they, they don't have, they're not, they don't have a one-on-one, um, person helping them throughout the day, um, but they, but their case manager ju, does check in with them regularly, checks in with their teachers to make sure that the 504 accommodations are being met. So sometimes they need certain instructional methods. They oftentimes need a lot of help with organization that the teacher provides, really on top of what you would usually give a student. Because they, they, again, they do have a disability, but a special service like math tutoring is not what they need.
And how many students, um... And how many students are followed by each case manager, roughly?
Uh, for special education, they have about fifteen students they case manage each.
Is it similar for the five oh four students?
No, no, she has close to forty.
Forty?
Yeah, there's one case manager for all the five oh fours, right?
She's going to follow them around, forty kids throughout the day?
She doesn't follow them throughout the day. She, um, she, she checks in with them regularly, she makes sure that their, that their meetings are scheduled and attended, uh, they, 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 they meet, um, at least once a year, and for some students, it's in their plan that they meet every six weeks, uh, with all of the teachers together, the parent, and the student. So, very often, um, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm really interrupting you. Remember, these students are in the mainstream with regular teachers who are...
Yeah, that's what I was unclear on before.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're, they're, who are working with them very closely and knowing them, so, so that's why these, the case manager can do less of the one-on-one.
Is that doable, though, to have forty students, uh, to try to oversee, man, I mean, that, to me, that seems, even though they're mainstreamed and they're in regular classes, still, if you've got some of these kids that are disruptive, or maybe you've got, let's say, a dozen of them on a given day that are very problematic, then I assume that case manager could be running silly and ragged pretty quickly.
Their teachers support them, too. It's not, the, the case manager's not the only, uh, adult in the building supporting those students, so, uh, Barbara and, and Carol Young, who's joined us in, um, in back, she works, uh, part-time at Leland Gray also as a staff member, and so they can attest to the close-caring relationships that the teachers, uh, cultivate with the students so that they can support them. There's no question that throughout Vermont and throughout the country, particularly students' mental health needs have grown exponentially since two thousand, and so quite a few, uh, students with a five oh four plan do have emotional disability. So, again, it's not academic, but there are other barriers to their learning, and it's not tutoring that they need or a different instructional method, but, um, methods to manage self-regulation. Um, in addition to the five oh four coordinator, who's also half-time in, uh, planning room staff, uh, there's a full-time campus supervisor who's, manages, um, the planning room, and our athletic activities director manages discipline for grades nine and ten. So, they work very closely and collaboratively, including with the administration and the school counselors. So, we're really a five-person team managing quite a few students, and unfor, and our school board knows that, uh, we've had to certainly deal with the rise of, uh, mental health issues in our school, and when, and I've gone to, um, conferences on the topic, and it's a major issue in schools that they have not seen to this extent before, not just, uh, at the high school where you may expect to see it, uh, stress and transitions, but also in the zero-to-five age group. So, America is changing, and, uh, I mean, those students who have a diagnosis already in preschool, we haven't seen that, I mean, they're, they're still ten years from coming to Leland Gray, but, uh, America has a new problem on its hands. I don't know if anyone else wants to...
Well, I just want to throw another thing into the mix. Now, understandably, not all five oh four youngsters are dis, are disruptive.
Right.
Some are needing testing modifications, modifications and learning plans that they can get through that mechanism, so it isn't like there's a whole room of, they all have different kinds of needs. They're not all disruptive, I don't want you to get that.
But if you had kids, let's say they had ADHD, would they likely fall into that category?
Yes, yes, if they did not have a, another learning disability like dyslexia or...
That's right, that's right, which is frequently managed by medication, sometimes not, but, you know, no, you're right, that's, that's it.
Hi.
Go, go ahead.
What is your average size of your classroom, or is there an average-sized classroom? And, um, two, um, is this new where you have teachers having multi-roles in classrooms, they dual certification or triple certification or whatever, um, and how long has that been going on?
Um, I'm going to ask you, ask, answer your second question first.
Okay.
So, uh, when I came to Leland Gray, there were already teachers, um, certified in more than one area, um, like PE and health, family consumer science and health, uh, French and science, uh, so there were, there were, um, science and social studies.
And before you answer that question, how taxing is that on them? What is the relationship between them, the students, the sta, uh, the people, the principal people around the school? What kind of coordination goes on there? Is it, is this very stressful? Is it taxing?
I would have to say no. Barbara, you might beg to differ, but, for example, we have a teacher new teaching PE this year for the first time, and this was a core teacher, loves it, loves being able to work with students in a whole new light. Here, I'll give you another example. We, um, middle school health, uh, is also teaching many of the middle school PE classes, absolutely loves it to be able to work with the, the body and the mind. So, Barbara.
Well, and that's true, but I will say, and I appreciate your concern and your concern for the faculty, it is very taxing because every year's different, and the preparation duties for those teachers change constantly. You can have a teacher who has, teaches three classes, brand-new, so that's three brand-new preps in a semester. It is stressful, um, and it's all budget-driven, so they're hanging in there, but there, I will say, there is a lot of stress. Dedicated professionals, but there is stress.
If we had other options, we'd exercise.
I got you.
That, exactly.
No, but, but actually, it, it, the individual staff member varies greatly in terms of their, uh, what do you call it, uh, approach to new challenges or other teaching opportunities.
Like any...
It isn't, you know, it's like any group of people. They vary in terms of their own, and it may have to do with their own personal lives and how much time they can give to extra preparations over it. I mean, as a veteran of five endorsements, you know, I say more the merrier, but, you know, and I've taught everything at Whitingham, but, you know, it, it's just that, I think it is, uh, different with different, different people.
It just would appear difficult for me if I were a teacher.
Yeah, well, yeah.
It is.
And, and, but, though, most of us have gone to high schools with two thousand students or something, like I did, obviously, it wasn't, uh, even in the cards.
Right.
You know, the teacher would come in and teach five biology classes, and that's it, the same class.
Right.
Well, I think that's pretty boring, but that's not everybody's attitude.
And your choice is, teach your subject half-time or have a full-time job, so it's not a very easy choice, and, um, I would go so far to say that the students are suffering, but it, it...
It's hard on the teachers.
It's very hard on the t, teachers for the most part. I can't speak for all of them, but...
But at the same time, they volunteer to do it. I mean, it, it's, there are conversations, no one is getting licensed in the area that they're not interested in doing.
Well, that's true, but the keeping a full-time job is, uh, incentive...
Sure is.
To volunteer where it's not a, um, choice.
Sure is.
Even then, yes, they're...
Somebody else.
I didn't see any, but, I didn't see any other questions. The first half of your question, I mean, we published a student-teacher ratio of eleven, eleven point two eight to one.
Eleven students per class, oh, per teacher.
Per teacher. Now, I, I know from, you know, anecdotally, that, you know, there are some classes that are much larger than that, and there are some classes that are smaller than that.
That's amazing. Well, at least where I was raised, in Lower Poughkeepsie, New York, we had classes thirty, thirty-five all the time, every year, all the way through school. When I got into college, I went to a small Catholic little arts college. Our classes were ten, fifteen, and I was like, wow, this is great. You're really, you're really one-on-one with the teacher at that point, but when you're sitting five rows back in a class of thirty-five or whatever, it's a little different. But, uh, but if you have a ra, a ratio of eleven to one in Leland and Gray...
That's why we have dual certifications.
Evidently.
Yeah.
Because, uh, that's, that's pretty good coverage.
You want to comment?
I'm just curious if you think it's a good thing or...
I think it's a good, well, I think eleven, eleven point eight to one?
Right.
There's ten people there. If I was a teacher, we had one, you all could ask me questions all, all day long, intermittently, but if for thirty-five people here and a class that's fifty-five minutes, could be a little bit different.
Could I ask for, uh, but that number, which is wonderful, also includes me, right? The librarian, the nurse...
Yes, it includes all the full-time equivalent professionals.
So, it's not quite, because eleven...
But still, it's pretty, pretty reasonable.
Doesn't include administrators.
And board has been supportive of it.
Uh, and keep in mind, uh, the elementary schools generally have a lower student-teacher ratio than eleven, however, New Brook is the exception there.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and the problem statewide is that it's, uh, around, uh, nine statewide, and that's why you have this tremendous concern about the declining enrollment statewide and the, the, you know, teach, number of teachers and the instructional load we have. And, yeah, uh, and the other thing is, I know the advertised, uh, ratio that people should look at also is adult, uh, to, or students to adult in the building. See, that would include your non-professional staff, support staff, and so forth, which are clearly not as expensive as, you know, not as, as, uh, compensated as highly as the teachers for a good reason, but, uh, they, that is about five or four, between four and five statewide now. I think you have to go to the AOE and find out what it is now, but that's, that's a tremendously, uh, expensive operation when you look at it from the big picture point of view, because eighty percent of our costs are in, in, in personnel and, you know, benefits. Uh, while you're on those pages, and he was referring to a page here that, you know, one of these pages shows you this, the student-teacher ratios, uh, that, that page, the one with the columns, I'd like to make sure that you appreciate what was just originally said there by Bill, uh, Mr. Gunther, there, we got, um, uh, on page sixteen of the annual report, and he's comparing the budget from FY sixteen at six million nine forty-three. I'll wait till you get there, Bill, I think that's what you're talking about. On page sixteen...
Page seventeen, Stephen.
Oops.
I'm talking in this report here. Am I got a bud, bad, bad report here?
He was looking at this, he was looking at this number.
Oh, okay, seventeen has the same number, fortunately.
Same number.
But if you go over to sixteen, I'm trying to compare with what's above it. If, if you look at the six million nine four three one eight five for, for budget FY sixteen, right? And then you compare that with this year's budget of seven million one two zero two one eight, you've got a two point five five percent increase, right? What I want to call to your attention is if you look, uh, above on page sixteen, you'll see what the budget revenue detail is, but it's provided, and that's, uh, the bottom line there for FY sixteen is not six million nine forty-three, it's seven million thirty-seven thousand three three seven. What's the difference? The, the issue is that the board voted to, uh, raise and appropriate more than the budget to offset, uh, a negative fund balance. That was a, a negative fund balance as a result of specialized costs and other things. So, when you look on this sheet from the state and you see the top line, budget FY sixteen, you'll note the seven million thirty-seven three three seven. Pretty fine print, but that's where, and then that's compared in FY seventeen to what you, you've been quoted here before, seven million one twenty-two eighteen, where, and that's, that's defined as the adopted or warranted union budget, right? Because when the public voted for the budget last year, they included that's up to seven million thirty-seven thousand three three seven, because we were trying to make up for a negative fund balance, which is basically a deficit. And that's where our costs exceeded our budget unexpectedly in the previous year. I want to make sure that public isn't misunderstanding those two, you know, why those numbers are different there, so appreciate you calling our attention to it.
One thing I wanted to touch on, and I mentioned this last year at the meeting, is the, uh, declining enrollment, you know, when you look at that, that graph on page ten...
Yeah.
Uh, it seems like when we hit twenty seventeen, we've got a, slope pretty much stays the same, we set down the trend, so we're going from three hundred and twenty students down to two seventy-four, so that's what it was, forty-six students, that's, yeah, that's seventeen, eighteen percent over a four-year period.
That's going to put tremendous pressure on the budget and the questions about sustaining instruction at the, at the present, uh, course offerings, programs level that we have.
Have you folks done any strategic planning to look at sort of where this line in the sand may be, where we really sort of cross into, I don't know, for lack of a better term, I'll just call it the red zone or the danger zone, where we really are going to have to start limiting things that are going to have a real serious impact on students' education.
Doesn't Act forty-six kind of, that's trying to address that?
Mm-hmm. Act forty-six is hoping to address that.
It's, it's putting, trying to put control of more districts under fewer people so that there can be strategic planning for all the district, districts based on what there is together in the pie, you know, and, and I think that's what the state is hoping for, that, and there may end up being some school closings based on need, you know, but that's, that's all for the voters to decide. No school will close without voters saying yes, but it may come up as an option by the board that oversees a number of schools, as opposed to each of us having our own little divided universe, because it's very difficult.
I mean, I understand the basics of two forty-six and why, but, you know, when I look at just the topography at the state, when you start having the bus gets that much farther, you know, if we were, with the topography of Kansas, it'd be a lot different story, but it's not the nature of Vermont. Do you folks get the sense that the State Board of Education is going to let a lot of those decisions stay local, or do you get the feeling that there are going to be some mandates or they're going to impose, so...
If you don't do, if you don't try to do anything and don't do anything, they will.
There are...
Yeah, there's a deadline, and after that, the agents, is it the AOE?
No, the State Board of Education.
The State Board of Education can, will decide what's going to happen.
Is that in three years?
Uh...
Two thousand twenty?
Is it eighteen?
I'll give you the timeline for Act forty-six, okay?
I don't have the timeline in front of me. But, yeah. Um, but there is a point in which State Board of Education will say, okay, this is what's going to happen, and the, and any discussion of that happening or not happening is pretty gone.
I mean, it's better to look at something visual, I think, so, if I could just take a moment, because I've seen this before, the first line at the top, the first bar, is, is really regarding, uh, the, uh, the accelerated mergers or combinations, and that's not possible for anybody new, as you, we don't, we don't have the, you know, that has to require a vote-of-town meeting or something before June, it's not going to happen, there's not that much. So, you really have to look at the next level of what's called conventional mergers, and that's really, as I mentioned before, this regional education district or, or something of that much going on.
Yeah, okay, I think it was that July one twenty nineteen date that I...
Yes, that's the one you want to focus on, yeah.
Okay.
Anyway, I don't want to distract you once again, folks, from the question.
Yeah, once again, we're going far afield from the purpose of the meeting. I, I would be happy to have an Act forty-six conversation, but if we're, if we don't have any questions that actually pertain to our annual report and our budget, um, you know, we could send the TV guy home and, and we could all get some coffee and talk about Act forty-six. Howie?
Yeah, just one more Act forty-six thing, because that was a little side conversation. Act forty-six depends upon local towns voting to give up their local school boards.
No, 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 no.
Oh, please, we are not going to go down Act forty-six.
The board is split on this experience.
All right, we're, we're going to talk about the Leland Gray budget, we're next here.
Oh, Howie's what's on the agenda.
And I, I didn't want to necessarily stir it that way, but I thought, you know, often this meeting is sort of low-key and somewhat informal and, you know, have an opportunity to ask some other...
We just seem to be going back to that one issue, which I'm happy to talk about, um, and I would be happy to stay here, but if, if somebody came expecting to ask budget questions and we're sort of not allowing that to happen, um, then I would feel I was remiss in, in sort of doing that. Um, you know, if there's no more budget issues, um, you know, we can talk about Act forty-six for as long as you like.
Well, I guess I'd like to, you know, try to follow what's going in the press in regards to staffing levels and the program cutbacks, and I, I want to thank the board. I think you folks had some really tough choices this year, and I know when there were talks, anytime there's talks about cutbacks, that creates a lot of angst, and I got the sense you folks really worked hard on that to try to come up with... And I got the sense you folks really worked hard on that to try to come up with a budget. Hopefully that is going to meet the educational needs of students and yet something that the taxpayers can realistically afford to.
That is our hope. Thank you.
A lot of the credit has to go to Durin, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, she's a principal to figure that out, to plan ahead, to work with the staff here, to make programs continue to exist, to let programs increase despite declining enrollment. It's really all credit to her.
It's amazing. It's amazing. She has so many balls in the air.
On the special ed dollars, is there a, is there an easy breakdown in terms of what kiddies they come from? How much comes from local? I mean, we're still getting federal dollars, I assume, and state dollars. But do you folks have a sense of those, how those percentages break out, local, state, federal?
If you look on page sixteen, on the top, it says the revenue. And so you can see all the areas. It's, doesn't it say percentage of the budget that comes, say, from tuition? But you can see what the revenue is.
Yeah, I looked at all those, those special ed categories at the bottom. I wasn't sure where the, the actual dollars came from, whether, again, they were local, state.
Oh, they're all fed.
They're all federal. Oh, thank you.
I mean, all the special ed ones. And the complication there, as you may be aware, is depending on the student's IP and their level of need and the cost to provide those services, there's a different level of reimbursement. And so when you get to a student that is in excess of fifty-six thousand dollars or something like that, then you, you have a different percentage of reimbursement, up to ninety thousand dollars. And then when you get past that, it's a hundred percent, anything past ninety, it's ninety percent from fifty-six to ninety thousand. And up to fifty-six thousand, it's about fifty-seven percent.
So if you just go over, it's not really graduated, then you just...
Well, it's graduated in a way, but it has these tiers, you know? And, and, and kids, I mean, depending on their needs, you can have a very, you know, to be caught, to be effective with a child, you can have a really major expense. And that's really another rationale behind trying to have at least a consideration of a broader approach of cooperation among boards. The Marlboro Board had proposed, the WCSU Board, three years, three years proposing that they share special ed costs according to ADM, average agent membership of each school district, rather than, you know, the specific child in each district. Which would, you know, cause things to go up and down less radically. And that hasn't passed. So, you know, we're still all independent in terms of our special ed, independent by school district in terms of our special ed costs. We're contracted through my office for greater efficiency. But, you know, if you have a very needy child in one district moves to another district, that cost moves to the other district.
I remember a patient, a friend of mine that was an education-based student, Bella Spalls. This was over fifteen years ago. It was fifty-six thousand dollars a year over at Crotchet Mountain School.
Well, I can assure you there are some students that are much more expensive than that, perhaps three times as much. Residential placement is, is a very expensive proposition. And depending on the needs, it's, can be even more expensive. So I, you know, it's, on the other hand, we have wonderful examples of these investments paying off in terms of these students, you know, graduating or being able to, to work and, and contribute to their communities because we've invested in their, their education. And what's very good now about Act one sixty-six and preschool education is that parents that want to have their child in preschool, of course, any problems will be identified earlier and perhaps addressed more effectively earlier in the child's life.
Anything else?
Certainly want to welcome everybody to attend next Tuesday night's annual meeting. As warned, it'll be, I do have an announcement, a special announcement. It's quite possible that this meeting next Tuesday night will not be in the big gym. It, it probably will be in Dutton Gym. There is a, a doubleheader with Proctor inadvertently scheduled for that night. And I'm very, somewhat embarrassed that that's happened because of course we voted annual meeting when the next year's meeting is going to be. So we ought to know that, but, you know. I'm just preparing those of you and especially people in the audience by cable that when you come next Tuesday night at seven-thirty for the annual district meeting, that will be, it was likely to be held in Dutton Gym.
I knew that was a game.
And we certainly hope for good attendance. That's another chance to ask questions about the budget. And, and then we will have the public as well informed as the board can make it to inform your vote on Wednesday in all of your school districts at the usual polling places in your towns, the five towns that are members of the union school districts of Leland Gray. The polls are open until seven PM. They'll all close at the same time. Check with your local town because they don't all open at the same time in the morning. And it is listed somewhere. I think we listed the times in the annual report. Is it in there? Can someone tell me the page? It's in the front. I know this is a, an issue of...
It's in the, it's in the Australian ballot warning, beginning at nine AM in Brookline, ten AM in Jamaica, nine AM in New Fane, nine AM in Townsend, and ten AM in Wyndham. Polls will close at seven.
But they'll all close at seven.
I'm confident.
Actually, that's by law. Their blinds are closed at the same time, but they, they can open at different times. Also regarding Act forty-six, we do have on the WCSU Board website, on the left-hand side, a special link to Act forty-six information. Actually, it links you to the Agency of Education, which has a very highly developed, you know, stack of resources in various categories. I brought tonight for members of the public that are interested, that timeline on Act forty-six I have here, the, the options that are available in terms of restructuring that go with each of those timelines. And I have a glossary of terms. For those of you that may not be familiar with the terms such as what a supervisory union is versus a supervisory district versus an educational district. So that might be of interest to you. And I also brought a few copies of the questions frequently asked, Act forty-six Study Committee questions frequently asked. And they have the answers as well. And this is from the study in Brattleborough and neighboring towns, the Wyndham Southeast Supervisory Union. And they've moved, in their study committee, the farthest along in our region, trying to head towards a vote sometime this spring in those towns. So I'll make that available for folks that have interest there. Thank you.
Anything more from the members of the public? I don't think the board needs anything else, do we? Take a look at the bottom of your agenda.
Bottom of the agenda for the meeting.
There's the upcoming meetings. We've talked about the one February second. Then there's the vote on February third. And we'll meet again February ninth at seven. There's also WCSU in March.
Marshall, your turn.
All right. Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
We're done, Rich? I'm serious. I'll talk about Act forty-six.